Okay, hello everybody and welcome to the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, November 10th, 2021. I would like to call the meeting to order and we'll do a quick trustee role call. If you just want to jump on and say a greeting, that would be great. Andrea Gravens.
Hi, everybody.
Donna.
Thank you, I am here.
Heather sends regrets. Jean will be joining us in a short bit. Amy.
Hello, everybody, I'm here.
Margot. Will be joining us shortly. Leah. Present, Kelly. Also should be joining us shortly, Tanya.
I'm here.
Kate and Joanna.
Readings from Oakville, Ward 4.
Hello there, Anna, I'm here, Tracy. So I would also like to welcome Director Ennis Curtis. Could you let us know who's here from the staff team?
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have with us primarily Superintendent Taha and Nagoy, who will be sharing some information with us, along with Associate Director Bogdan and myself.
Okay, welcome. And welcome to Gail and also to Kevin, who is the technical genius behind our online streaming. And welcome to everybody in the crowd, in the virtual room tonight. Welcome to the meeting, Kelly. I just want to remind everybody, because we are in Committee of the Whole, it's less formal, so we can use first names here. We still make motions as usual, but they don't require seconders. And we'll just be using the hand up function or the real hand up to indicate that you want to talk and for your votes. So I'd also just like to welcome Margot to the meeting, who's also joined. Okay, so we'll move on to item 1.3, acknowledgement of traditional lands, and over to you, Donna.
Thank you. Halton as we know it today is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations in the Métis. From the Anishnabi to the Ata Water End, the Haudenosaunee, and the Métis. These lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the credit for a station for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you so much, Donna. And we will move on to approval of the agenda. I have a couple of notes, three notes, actually. Number one, there was an additional administrative procedure that was circulated this afternoon regarding 3D printers. And you'll recall that admin procedures are making a stop at Committee of the Whole for people to ask any questions that you may have to increase our efficiency as possible at board meetings. So that's note number one. Note number two is that with your permission, we'll move 3.4.2, which is the Student Trustee Policy Committee, up under item 3.2, the staff reports, because student trustees are going to be involved in that section of the meeting. And so that should hopefully fall just about 7 o'clock, so hopefully after their dinner hour and before any evening time commitments that they may have. So that's a proposed note number two. And note number three, that we will be having a brief private session with Committee of the Whole this evening. And it is noted as item number two, but the proposal is to move it under 5.0 Public Questions just to facilitate meeting flow for anybody that may be watching either now or in the future. So all of the public facing items come together and then we'll have that brief session adjourned. So with those notes, would anybody be willing to make a motion to approve the agenda? Thanks very much, Andrea. And is there any discussion or questions about those changes? Or anything else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda as revised. Okay, thanks very much. Tanya, did you put your hand up there? I just looked away for a second. Okay, and that carries unanimously. Thanks very much, everybody. So we'll look then at the consent agenda, which is item 2.1 Minutes Committee of the Whole from October 13, 2021. And those are attached to the agenda, which again is posted at hdsb.ca for anybody who would like to access them. So would anybody be willing to make a motion regarding the consent agenda approval? Thanks very much, Leah. Okay, is there any discussion on the minutes, which are the consent agenda? No? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes. Okay, great, excellent. That carries unanimously. Thanks very much, everybody. So we will move into the presentations under 3.0. And we have allocated roughly 25 minutes for this first item, which is administrative procedures. And we have six of them. So this will be over to Sari and Roxana. And I'm hoping you can just kind of give us the high level of what's here and the major changes that would have taken place. And then we can spend sort of an equal amount of time with questions.
Certainly. Good evening. I'm not sure. Do you want to go first, Roxana, or you go ahead?
Okay. So I have the school fundraising procedure that has been revised recently, mainly to be updated for some of the work that we've done with regards to the third-party agreement, policy, and procedure that we've put in place. And we rescinded the sponsorships and partnerships one, so making those changes throughout the procedure. There hasn't been anything major. I think that was the main one, as well as some of the relation to some old guidelines that were no longer applicable or printed material, things like that, that stood out for us. So other than that, there hasn't been any significant or material changes to the procedure.
Thank you. Trusty Kelly, trustee Kelly, your hand is up. Is it up for this or still up from last time around? Okay, I'm going with it's still up. So if there are no questions on this, we'll move on to the next one. Oh, Tanya, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So question on this procedure. I know that the principals will be intimate with the procedure, but what is the expectation for this information to be shared with school councils? And I ask that because fundraising always generates, I think, the most questions from council chairs and treasurers and fundraising organizers. And across Halton, not everyone's on the same page. So how do we communicate this information to school councils?
Thank you for that, trustee Rocha and through Vice Chair Harrison. We do have, the webpage for school councils has a few direct links to the appropriate policies and procedures that guide their work as councils. And this is, of course, one of those. So when they click on that link, they will always get the most updated procedures that are referenced there and therefore see this particular one as well. So other than that, we haven't really contemplated a formal submission to school council chairs. We certainly share them with the principals and as they have meetings, I am sure that they would make reference to the procedure. As I mentioned, there's nothing really drastic that changed, especially for the school councils. They're not really part of the third-party agreements, changes that we've made throughout the procedure.
Hi, Joanna.
Yeah, thank you. Just wondering about the timeline. It states right now that activities have to be decided by October 25th. And I'm just wondering, particularly for new schools, or you know, if there is a new group of parents that come together and form a council. And this doesn't typically happen until early October. I'm just wondering if that might be a little bit soon for some of these councils to figure out what activities they're, you know, going to pursue. I guess, you know, guidance from the principal and maybe guidance from the previous year's council would be helpful in that respect. But I'm just wondering what drives the October 25th timeline? And if there's some flexibility to that? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. The timeline is based on the fact that that will contain one meeting, one school council meeting in between to inform the plan and also provide enough time throughout the year to enact on it. So what are the additional fundraising activities to be contemplated? As well as what would the school like to engage in in terms of some additional expenditures so that the carryover from year over year can be used in the year or years of school for the students who participated in fundraising for that particular school? So it's been recommended by our regional internal audit team a number of years back to be as early as possible. I think September 30 was their first choice and we had pushed back to make sure that there are opportunities to consult with school council and the school community before something like that would be approved and posted, etc. And to your second part of the question, in terms of flexibility, schools that do have extraordinary circumstance would be able to request an extension and we would document that for an audit perspective as to why some of the schools may have not met that timeline.
Okay, thank you. There are no other questions on this one. For me, I just always think that the rules are getting stricter and stricter and I understand why that is. And there hasn't been material changes to this one. But these are volunteers that are probably also stretched in their daily lives. Not the principals are not volunteers, but the people that are, you know, enacting all of this stuff. And I just, yeah, I just feel for them in this. I remember thinking there were a lot of rules back when I was doing this and that just kind of keeps on heightening, you know, the reporting and the accountabilities and all this stuff. And I just really hope that also we take the chances to thank people for continuing to persevere through all of it, whether it's the principals or, you know, the volunteers, because they do raise lots of funds to do lots of things in lots of schools. Anyway, hiring, go ahead. Sorry, I think you're next. Yeah?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent Nagoy. So before you are for, sorry, five administrative procedures, I will speak to two specific procedures that, in my view, have substantive revisions. And these are the COVID-19 immunization disclosure procedure and the hiring of occasional administrators procedure. Those two procedures, the revisions are material, I would say. The other three procedures, the criminal background checks procedure, the employee personnel files procedure, and the 3D printer selection and uses procedure. The revisions are, I would say, housekeeping in nature, minor or cosmetic. But I'm happy to take any questions about those three. In terms of the two that I commented on as being revisions that are material in nature, with respect to the COVID-19 disclosure procedure, the two key revisions that are before you are under Section 2.1. And they speak to the additional options that employees may attest to when completing their attestation. Originally, the options were only three, that you're fully vaccinated, that you're not vaccinated due to a medical exemption, or you are not vaccinated entirely. There are two additional options now, and that is that you have received the required doses of the vaccines, but the 14-day period have not passed since your second dose. And the other option is that you have received one dose and you are awaiting the second dose to be scheduled. So that's one key change. The other key change is that, under the rapid testing requirements, as you know, the requirements were twice a week. And as recently as last week, the ministry advised that now the requirements are three times a week, effective today, in fact, November 10th. So to avoid the perpetual updating of this AP, we had opted to choose language that says the rapid testing will be in accordance to Ministry of Education, Ministry of Health guidelines. And so it's a bit of a generic statement. And then we follow that up with specifics to employees who are in the rapid testing program. So those are the two key changes with respect to the immunization disclosure procedure. With respect to the hiring procedure.
Oh, sorry, Jean has a question. Thank you. Go ahead, Jean.
Yes, thank you through the vice chair. Thank you for those comments. Sorry. I noted in my notes of review that 2.3 and 2.5 both refer to the two times a week, but I liked how you worded it in 2.4, where you said "in accordance with the MOE guidelines." So would 2.3 and 2.5 adopt that type of language?
Yes, that's an omission on our part. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. And we certainly will harmonize the language to avoid any prescribed language. So thank you for catching that, trustee Gray.
Thank you very much.
Nice work, Jean. I don't see any other questions on this one. Go ahead, sorry.
So the second administrative procedure that comes with, you know, significant revisions in our view is the hiring of our occasional administrators. There are two key changes to this AP. One, with respect to how we go about advertising that we are in need of occasional administrators to join our supply ranks. Historically, we have built our supply list of principals and vice principals through retirees. Those who retire often wish to continue to have a relationship with Halton and continue to work for us in a supply capacity. We will continue to do so. However, we are looking to also expand that recruitment method and move towards a job advertisement method. We've had on numerous occasions retirees from outside of the Halton region expressing interest in joining our board. And we also feel that this job advertisement method would also align with our employment equity policy and our hiring practices. So that's one change. The other change is with respect to the pay rate for occasional administrators. And I refer specifically to those who come in on a daily supply assignment. It's not a long-term occasional assignment, that is, they're here for a day or two. Anything less than 10 days is considered a short-term assignment. The rate of pay prior to this change was $300 for a vice principal and $350 for a principal. And this rate of pay has been in place since September of 2015 and has not changed. It has not received any adjustments due to inflation or any other kinds of adjustment. I would point out that the occasional administrators are not part of the OPC Association, so they're not subject to any economic changes or, sorry, adjustments to pay rates. So in reviewing and surveying other boards with respect to pay rates, we surveyed nine boards, and they are Hamilton Wetworth, Waterloo, Brandt Holdeman, Hamilton Wetworth Catholic, Halton Catholic, Peel, Niagara, Upper Canada, and Wellington Catholic in Guelph. And we found that we are the second lowest paying board for that cohort of employees. While we haven't had issues with respect to filling jobs and attracting and retaining our administrators as they are, you know, Halton-born, raised, let's say. But it's becoming an issue. We anticipate it will become an issue as our needs increase with respect to administrators. So adjusting the rate, pay rate from $350 for our principals to $500 puts us at the 50th percentile. We're not the higher end of the pay grid, nor are we at the lower end. We're in the 50th percentile. So that makes us a bit more competitive and more attractive. And we think it's a fair paying pay rate for our principals. And for our vice principals, the rate goes from $300 to $450. Again, also to be aligned with other boards in the greater GTA. So those are the two key changes to this AP. And I'm happy to take questions.
And there is at least one. Go ahead, Andrea.
Hi, Sari. Thank you for bringing this tonight. I'm just amazed that we were second lowest at that rate and we are only moving up to the 50th percentile, moving up substantially. So it is amazing that there's no sort of standard rate. Is there any talk about some sort of standard rate? Uh is is there any talk about some sort of standard rate among uh neighboring kind of boards or or you don't want? Like, I don't know what the uh the competition is like. Um and I know, uh you know, people want to work in Halton, but uh sometimes the uh the wallet speaks. Um what? I I I'm just curious, what is the top? Not which board is it? Um but what is the top rate out there?
So so boards who um uh I would say are um, thanks Andrea for uh, sorry trustee grievance chair grievance for the question. Um so boards who uh are paying at the higher end of the pay uh pay rate are actually paying supply principles on the grid, on the actual grid. So in other words, uh you're coming in for that day and you're making the exam exact same pay rate as a permanent principal. Uh so that's, so they do not have a separate pay rate for a daily supply. Uh so I I'm hesitant to speak about, you know, the rationale behind it. Uh and and uh clearly, it's a generous pay rate. We we feel that, you know, the having two different grids speak to uh that, you know, the different responsibilities of a permanent principal versus an occasional principal. That's not to say one job is ea- easier than the other. Um so that that's what explains the the top pay rate and and typically it's north of six hundred dollars. So if you convert the uh salaries into a daily rate from our grids, you would derive that value. Uh so boards are, as I said, at the higher end, do not have a separate grid for uh daily supplies. Uh we we think you need to differentiate between those two. Uh we also think that you may run into a problem that if you harmonize the rate, that you may have a mass exodus on your hand. Uh given that the pay rates are the same. Uh I'll be very frank about that. So that's uh, so there isn't a consistent grid. You 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 need to keep an eye on uh your com- you know, your competitors in the mi- marketplace and and see if you're, you know, falling short on on attracting and retaining individuals. I'd say, you know, working in an organization goes beyond, you know, monetary compensation and and as you said, people want to work for Halton and it's a great organization place to work. But again, we were, there was also a compression piece where almost the the daily rate of a supply principal is no different than a supply teacher. Uh we we were getting there, so we needed to correct that.
Wow, okay. Thank you very much. And I underst- it's, what you've said is completely logical to me, so makes sense.
Go ahead, Margot. And sorry, feel free to use first names.
Yeah, yeah, we're Margot, Margot and Andrea, not Chair of Events and Trustee Shuttle.
I I know, I forgot. It's it's less formal than the board meeting.
All right, so sorry, I got, I'm 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 trying to figure this out. So how long have we been, has there been, like, has this discrepancy always been there? Like, if this, you're just noticing this today or whenever it was you saw it, have we known for the past how many years, we've always been at the lower end of pain?
W- w- we've known that we uh, yeah, I mean, this pa- pay rate has been around since two thousand fifteen. We've known that the pay rate does not uh uh align with others in terms of competitiveness, but but we felt that it was competitive enough uh to to so to attract individuals uh to accept those daily assignments. But we're 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 seeing, we we started to see uh some challenges in filling those jobs and those assignments. And the feedback from our supply principals that they feel while they uh they they are grateful, enjoy working in Halton. Uh others uh are are uh paying more, the job is a bit more difficult. And in addition, that again, there's been a grid compression uh with 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 other occasional workers and particular teachers.
So then, quickly, um have I'm just, I'm just amazed that it's just such a big, like, it's such a big difference. Have other boards upped their up their game to try to hire more? Or is it, as I said, is it always, it's just just the way it's always kind of been?
I I lost you there for a moment. My my computer froze. Sorry about that.
So have other boards recently upped their game? Like, I just, I I'm amazed that we would be able to retain people if there's such a a discrepancy, if it's always been there. Or has have other boards in recent years up the ante, so to speak?
Uh I I can't answer that question, Margot, in terms of uh what uh, you know, how long these pay rates have been in place relative to to ours. What I can say is the lowest paying board, and I won't mention the name, as we were the second lowest paying board, is also undertaking a review of their pay rates. Uh but I'm not aware of of others who are uh, you know, trying to up your, up their game as you, as you framed it.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Jean.
Uh thank you very much. And sorry, just to the the point that Margot has been making in the last few minutes. Um I see at the very top of this documented admin procedure that we, you know, it's been revised uh November twenty twenty one. But that it comes back for review in September twenty twenty three. Would we make sort of a a note to do a a similar comparison two years from now to see if we're still in the mix in terms of our pay rate as aligned with other boards? Is that something that we would normally do or do we more more often focus on the other parts of this procedure?
The uh obviously, in 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 uh, thanks Jean, in reviewing the AP, we look at all of its aspects and components. Uh I can say to you that uh regularly scheduled um review of of pay rates, you know, relative to others in the marketplace is not something that uh is scheduled, uh and that's regardless of of the employee group or the job. Uh but duly noted in terms of considering a regularly scheduled uh pay rate uh sort of analysis relative to others. Uh so I'll make note of that.
Thanks, sorry.
Thank you. And there are no other questions. I s- sorry. Has there been an analysis, and maybe this is for Roxanna, and maybe the answer is not available? It's all good. Uh an analysis with respect to the budget impacts of, you know, knowing our trends in terms of how many people we retain under these scenarios and knowing that we up this by twenty five percent or whatever it is. What's the budget impact?
Thank you for that question. Uh of course, that was my question to sorry. Before we moved on, um you know, all jokes aside, this this is a much needed uh increase in the rates in order to stay uh fair and competitive. Um I believe we have upwards of about five hundred days uh in a year. And with the the differential in uh the per day, I think we're around eighty eighty to ninety thousand in a full year in terms of additional impact.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I'm just, I was just curious. I absolutely think it's worthwhile making sure we are competitive and fair with people. Yeah. So thank you. Are there, so we have a couple more minutes. Uh are there any other questions on any of the other ones that did not have material changes? Did anybody flag anything in those? Did you have? Nope. Okay, well, let me ask this. Um is everybody good with this process? Because we, this is new, right? The AP is coming here. And that was a request trustees had and and Curtis and the senior team were uh gracious enough to I guess entertain that. So here we are. Um that's not to say somebody might not have a last minute. Uh whoa, I forgot to ask about this, but um and these ones are just for information, so. Okay, uh just briefly Andrea and Jean on process, I'm imagining.
Yes, and I I just want to say that I really do appreciate them coming to committee of the whole. Um, thank you.
Okay, Jean, go ahead.
Uh ditto from me on those comments. However, I just wanted to point out that I think all of the procedures that came before us tonight have um a revision date of earlier in September, but this one on renumeration seems to be November, and I'm not sure if we need to be consistent on all of these tonight. Um I leave that up to um Curtis and and perhaps Gail as to the dates they want to have appearing on those uh documents. Thank you.
And presumably, yeah, I don't know if that date would align then with the uh board meeting as opposed to this or what it aligns with. Go ahead, Gail, and see your hand.
For that, some of them have been at admin council and are delayed coming with the change in our process. So several of them have been looked at in September. And this is the first opportunity to hit a committee of the whole prior to going to board next week. So we will play catch up. You will see those dates a little more responsive to when they were reviewed and when they come to committee of the whole in the future.
Okay, Jean, you're good?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Gail.
Alrighty. Whoa, one minute in advance. Nice work. And I really appreciated kind of the highlighting of the material changes uh and uh the focus question. So uh thanks very much, sorry and Roxanna. And sorry have a wonderful night. If you want to go, you're welcome to stay. Roxanna, on the other hand.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
See you later.
Bye.
We're uh moving on then to item three point two, which is the HSTS Transportation Services in Halton and other areas. We've allocated about twenty five minutes. Um this came through a request from Jean. Um and Roxanna prepare and team prepared a presentation. Here it is. It's also in the folder. And it was also circulated by email. So however you access it most efficiently, hopefully you have it in that way. Uh and over to you, uh Roxanna.
Thank you. I'm just going to present this and then I won't be able to see hands up, so please interrupt uh if you do have questions as we go through. Let's just see. How's that?
It's good.
Okay, wonderful. So we did look uh at our secondary uh transportation data with respect to Georgetown uh for the two high schools. Uh so for Georgetown District, we have approximately seven hundred students almost bust and four hundred and thirty walkers uh that are between the elementary and secondary eligibility uh criteria, so one point six to three point two kilometers. Um in uh the last couple of years, when we did have courtesy seats, uh we were accommodating close to sixty courtesy seats for Georgetown District. In comparison, if we look at Christ the King, uh there are more students bust, about eleven hundred students bust and two hundred and fifty two walkers between the distance of one point six and three point two kilometers. Um and the courtesy seats are just under fifty a year for the two years prior to the pandemic. We've looked uh uh in particular at Hungry Hollow Bridge um and some of the concerns that that might be a bit difficult in terms of navigating for walkers. Uh we do note that um if there was um busing for the students in in that are uh beyond the bridge, there would be no impact to Georgetown because all of the students uh that are across the bridge are in fact eligible for Georgetown District. Um there are about twenty five students that are walkers in that area for Christ the King. Having said that, I know uh trustee Gray has looked at another pocket. I'm looking on my other screen over here. Um uh uh the pocket that is still a alongside um so over the bridge but alongside eighth line there. Um and I did have a bit of information on that. Um so currently, just in that pocket, we we do have forty two students that reside in that area. And in the past, about twenty five of them received courtesy seat transportation. So we were able to address um those for courtesy seats. So the the next couple of slides uh provide a bit of a uh uh graphic in terms of the walkers. The darker green are the walkers uh that are between zero kilometers and one point six kilometers uh of Georgetown District. And the lighter green are uh between one point six uh and three point two kilometers. Just gonna hide this. There we go. The next slide is the same map for Christ the King. Um so you will see the bit of a different disparity uh and walkers that are uh a bit further away, which for Christ, for uh Georgetown District would do um provide transportation. And then that uh uh area here is the one that trustee Gray was also questioning uh in both slides. If I come back to uh our uh school, uh these are the forty two students uh which um in the past have uh received about twenty five courtesy seats in terms of applications. And uh being uh able to be accommodated. We did also look at student retention schedules uh for the last few years for both the English track and French immersion. Uh we are at about eighty two percent retention uh for the grade eight going into grade nine uh for the English track and uh ninety six, so eighty seven to ninety six, depending on the year for the French immersion. And I did share with trustees separately, um it's not in the presentation. We did have uh request some information for retention for Christ the King. And I believe they were at around uh ninety two percent retention uh or ninety two to ninety four in some years, depending on uh French programming or the English program. So some of the students, um about ten percent um are uh going to Christ the King. Uh and eight percent either move out of the region or they could be going to a private school, uh etc. So looking at um student transportation consideration and the eligibility criteria, I wanted to just provide a little bit of a background. Uh in terms of the tran- uh consortia that was mandated by the Ministry of Education, I believe in two thousand and eight, nine uh time frame, with the focus on adopting consistent uh parameters uh for transportation, sharing uh costs and being more efficient uh within each region. Uh the transportation uh grant allocation is dependent on the uh level of efficiency of each uh consortium. Our um student um Halton Student Transportation Services or HSTS is uh considered highly efficient and has in the past received a top up grant um because of all the efficiencies. Uh transportation funding is currently under review. There is a provincial working committee that uh is looking at um one, the procurement of services uh for the bus operators. Uh and we already have a competitive bidding process uh and contracts in place, but some consortiums or some areas do not. And the the second piece, the the larger uh body of work is with respect to analyzing the costs and the various parameters. Uh the end goal is for the grants for student needs, so the funding formula for next year to be updated with a set of um consistent eligibility criteria, distance parameters, for example, that will be the same province wide and uh also looking at some local um parameters in terms of um um you know, if you, if there was rural distance school. So taking into account a little bit uh of the geography of some other school boards, not just urban uh considerations. And the funding will be based on those parameters. The closer we are with those parameters, the closer we would match costs to um the funding allocation. Uh currently, both uh boards, member boards, so uh our board and the Catholic board adopt consistent transportation parameters and the same transportation policies uh which are then enacted by HSTS. In the incorporation agreement for HSTS, we uh have agreed to uh cause to to be partners in consistency and in cost saving. So we do an annual review of efficiency um parameters in in trying to consolidate runs and be as efficient as we can, especially as we accommodate growth. If one board decides to implement something different, it is liable to cover any lost efficiencies and increasing costs to the other board. If the transportation um because the the consortium would lose the efficiency status and funding would be impacted, the member board that may have caused that would be uh responsible to cover that loss for the other member board as well. So those are some of the rules of the game. So those are some of the rules of the game, if you wish, that we are playing with in terms of, in terms of the body of work under HSTS in supporting both member boards. I also wanted to mention that the transportation costs exceeded funding by 1.6 million in the financial statements for 2020, 2021, which will be presented at the board next week. So we are, in the past, we've been quite close, sometimes even under the funding allocation because of the efficiencies. For the last year and the current year, we are seeing costs exceeding our funding in the transportation area. So a little bit of, we've done a little bit of review in terms of the transportation or the history of transportation for students in Georgetown. And in the early 2000s, about 2001, 2002, there were delegations to the school boards for additional student transportation in Georgetown, even if it involved a fair. At that point in time, the provider for the transportation was Tyler Transportation, of which the owner, Angela Tyler, is currently the manager for Student Georgetown, who were the successful bidder in the last RFP. So Tyler Transportation essentially was absorbed under First Student Georgetown, and Angela Tyler is their current manager of operations, so would have that history. So under Tyler Transportation, in collaboration with the municipality, they provided a shuttle bus for students for a paid fare. And the bus tickets were provided through community centers, for example. And the, essentially, the municipality contracted this bus and paid for it and then offered tickets to students to offset in part, I'm sure it wasn't in full, the cost for that. And the shuttle bus would go around and pick up the students that were between that, you know, 1.6 and 3.2 kilometer range, or probably more, because I do know at one point we were at 4.2 kilometers for eligibility for secondary panel. So they would pick up the students that were more on those edges of the eligibility parameters and bring them to school. So that worked for a while and it was abandoned a number of years later. I am not sure why. If there was less interest, if the demographics changed and there were more families that were able to drive students to school in, that were in that area, I am not quite sure. But it is, it was abandoned after a number of years. Georgetown is a growth area as well. Vision Georgetown has a number of schools designated within it. So for our board, three elementary and one secondary school. We do anticipate as of right now that the new units will come online in 2025, 2026. So that's when they will generate additional students for our system. And schools, if they do lag behind development, may not be opening quite at the same time. So they would have to be, the boundary review would be to absorb them under the current secondary schools in Georgetown until such time that a third one would would open. The development may be pushed even further as there is an appeal in the Ontario Land of Tribunal right now. So that has been pushing the date a bit beyond the expected 2025, 2026 school year. And the transportation, of course, depending on when the schools come on online, they, it will be a mix between bust and walkers in in this pocket. So a few considerations, when we look at everything and with our mandate to be efficient, with our mandate to provide busing for those students that are beyond a certain point. We did put down a number of items and trustee Gray and I have gone through them before this meeting. In, there's a possibility that we could rekindle the discussion about the shuttle bus and staff would be happy to provide the data and information needed and collaborate with First Student and town staff in order for them to make an informed decision whether or not it's feasible to reinstate this paid service. Again, at the cost of the town, of course, but we would be happy to collaborate and provide any information necessary to facilitate it. The board could lobby with the mayor's office in order to consider this paid fare for the community. It won't be available, even if they would consider this, it certainly won't be available for the school year. It takes time to procure a school bus or a bus and have a train driver, et cetera. So it would most likely be for the following school year. And as we mentioned at the last board meeting, courtesy seats are opening up. We've had about 1,000 requests on the first day it opened. So there's quite a bit of interest. They are going to be provided at a reduced level, starting with January after the Christmas break. And we were confident and this would be able to address the, some of the concerns we have in this area with some of those students that may have to walk a long distance, that don't have another alternative or cannot get a ride or carpool to school. So we, we will know more about the courtesy seats later in December and we can update trustees at that time. Right now, all we can see is that there's a lot of requests coming in right away from all the municipalities in our region. And I think that was the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Jean, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. And first of all, I want to say a great thank you to Roxanna and all the people that pulled the numbers together so quickly. These are unprecedentedly big and busy times over at HSTS, I know, with the shortage of drivers and the route changes and, and now, oh my goodness, courtesy seats, 1,000 in one day. Isn't that amazing? So the work carries on for the people over at HSTS, but I want to thank you for this. I want to say to trustees that my request way back when we looked at this was, was being born out of a concern for retention rate, generally speaking. And you can see that we have in around about 82%, I think, is some of the figures that we see in the data that was collected. And the Catholic School Board has anywhere from 94 to 96%. And the concern that I was hearing was that perhaps people in South Georgetown were choosing to go to that school that for which they got transportation. And clearly, it doesn't seem to jive up with what is being presented here tonight by Roxanna's collection of data and so on and so forth. Roxanna and I talked about programming. I had been told just recently that Christ the King is about eight or nine years old up here in Alton Hills. And they actually refer to the time in which there was the transportation that you have spoken about tonight, Roxanna. Just read from, it says here, it is a result of the ministry's education's harmonization of school transportation. The board opted to cancel buses between Georgetown South and the local Catholic school, resulting in students having to walk upwards of four kilometers to school. As a result, a local transportation contractor provides a school bus that picks up students for a small fee to drive them from the south end of Georgetown to the north end. Sadly, as Roxanna has indicated, it isn't, it isn't any longer in position. But it is something that I think bears.
Eligible for that school. But I, I would have to check to be sure, but that's my recollection. However, you have a great question. There are distinctions between programming. So the 3.2 kilometers for secondary and 1.6 kilometers for the elementary panel are consistent between the two boards for the homeschool of of the student. And then you look at French programs, AP, IB, we have CPP programs, for example, that are regional and some of them have transportation and some of them do not have transportation. Overall, our board does a lot more of those programs, especially the CPP type of programs where we do provide transportation. And as a result, our special education transportation costs are higher than the Catholic Board. And that is by choice, that however, has their own buses and it doesn't impact or infringe on the efficiencies of the runs every, every morning that pick up students from one school, then drop them off at the other school and picks up. So they go within the same sort of neighborhood and were able to use one bus for three or four schools every morning and afternoon. That's where the efficiencies lie. We, the costs for programming are borne by each board separately and that's where the differences are. If we choose to do a certain, so French immersion, CPP programs, things like that, where we have a larger boundary than your homeschool and we would provide transportation. Overall, our costs are higher as we've provided, especially for special education, as we're providing more programs for students with transportation.
Hey, we're down to a few minutes here. Hopefully, we can chart a path forward. Andrea, go ahead.
Yes, actually, I think AP over there was recently changed to that they would provide. I remember a very, as you know, I tend to watch their board meetings and I do remember something about that, that the, I think that certain set of trustees did force that through. But my point is that I worry that we'll get in a tit-for-tat situation as well. I don't want to upset the, the apple cart on this, but noting that, that, you know, discussions about, and, and discussions are fine, but about having this potentially a shuttle bus, wouldn't be surprised if the Catholic Board then engages in a similar thing. And then we're, we're back with no real gains because we can't stop them from doing things as well. So it's, it is, I can understand it being frustrating up there. And I know that the two schools are only a kilometer apart, so they probably have a very similar catchment area. So, yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, we go one way, we shift right, they'll shift right. You know, it's, it's not, it's not a surprise.
Even so, wouldn't it just be serving the students better? I don't know if those opportunities were there, no matter where they go. But anyway, Roxanna and then Margot.
You're worried you had an extra minute to fill. I just wanted to add to what Andrea was mentioning. When we were pulling this information and we did discuss it at our operating committee with HSTS, which has both boards present, so my counterpart was there. He did mention that the same sort of reach from community has seemed to happen at their trustee level as well and some interest. And in mentioning that we're gathering this information, requested if we could share the data that were presented. And since it's a public meeting, I will be sharing, I haven't yet, but I will be sharing the presentation. They did share with us their retention levels, which I shared separately with trustees. And they were interested in speaking about those potential recommendations as a consortium for the entire Georgetown population for both member boards. So that's where that discussion was. I am not sure whether there would be an interest indeed at the trustee table or was just more at the staff level.
Go ahead, Margot.
And mine is just a quick one. And there's another meeting that I'm not at. It's quick on the background. I'm just wondering, like, I know when Andrea brought up the tit-for-tat, I'm just kind of wondering, coming back really Tracy to what you kind of looked at. Are we doing it for retention or are we doing it for the good of the students to support them in getting to school, regardless of what school they went to? And I would think it would probably be a nice thing if it was, like, if we're doing it and then the Catholic School Board is doing it too. I just, you know, it's that, just for the greater, greater good of helping kids. So, I don't know, just a comment.
Okay, so how do we wrap this up in a positive way at this point? Is there, Roxanna, are the, if you go to slide 10, the suggestions that are there, I heard Jean say, express support for, for that. And is that something that will happen anyway, that exploration at a staff level? Or do you need a motion from trustees to support or direct that at this point? Jean and Roxanna, how would you like to handle that? And then we can just check in with everybody around the table.
I would tend to defer to Gail on the motion part. I'm happy to reach out to First Student and start some conversations. You know, at the staff level, I'm not sure on the proper process. I'll take my direction from you.
I would just like to comment, if I may, that I think the first part would be a confirmation of need. I think Roxanna has told us that she's hearing from the other side, the Catholic side, that they too have interests and, and maybe it's, it's for us to have a survey of some sort or some method of finding out those who live below Hungry Hollow. And, and it's not just the bridge side of Hungry Hollow, it's also the eighth line side of Hungry Hollow. Those who live below and who are walking currently, are they of interest in, in, you know, participating in paying, paying for transportation? Whether it be some kind of a student fee, if the, if the town was able to work with the board on that project. So I, I think we need to collect more data before we would begin any sort of formal lobbying. I'm not sure how we go about that, but that's maybe something that Curtis might be able to help us out with in terms of how we might, you know, work within our Georgetown community and with Curtis's counterpart to determine the need.
Thank you, trustee Gray. I mean, certainly, we can, you know, we can, we can move forward with the, with the, with the changes that I suggested here. As staff, we can reach, do the outreach. And if there are any, you know, major changes to our procedures, certainly, the board, that would come to board for approval or information, as the case might be.
So Curtis, just going back to what Jean said, do you concur that the next step would involve some kind of figuring out the need? Because it would be a real shame to invest anybody's time developing something with the town and possibly the service provider and so on, if the people aren't really interested, you know.
Agreed, agreed. I think that's a great first step.
Cool. Okay, so then the question is, do you be, in the past, there's kind of the fine line, do you feel this is something that staff could take on? Like, we're just good-to-go kind of thing out of this discussion? Or do you need us to make a motion indicating support for that, recognizing that it is an operational thing?
I, I don't think we need a motion, Tracy, but I will speak with Roxanna. We will devise a strategy.
And Jean, does that work for you?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm happy to join in at any time on any of those conversations. Thank you.
Okay, and fellow trustees, does that work for everybody? Good. Okay, so super. Thanks so much for all of the information. It was, yeah, it's really interesting to see those rates and, and the history and so on. So thanks, Roxanna. And again, you are welcome to stay, but if you go, you have a great night. Okay, so according to our revised agenda, we're moving up item 3.4.2, which is the trustee, student trustee. which is the trustee, student trustee policy committee work. And we have about 10ish minutes for that. And I want to welcome and recognize that Vandy has joined us. So I'll turn it over to Joanna, Leah and Van D. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, thank you and thank you for accommodating us, um, in favor of, um, really accommodating our student trustees and their busy school schedule. Um, as you recall, um, the Board of Trustees passed a motion on September 29th. And so a student trustee, uh, policy review subcommittee was formed. My, uh, fellow student trustee mentor Leah and I are co-chairs of the subcommittee. And we're joined by, of course, our two student trustees, Casey and Vandy, along with, uh, associate director Bog, two former student trustee mentors, Margot and, and Donna and Tanya. We've met, uh, three times, um, and we have a couple more meetings, uh, booked to finalize some of the questions or maybe anything that arises from, uh, from tonight's discussion or comes, uh, forward from you. Uh, we looked at the former student trustee policy and the subcommittee decided to, um, to tease out the, the sections that are really relevant for a policy and appropriate for a policy and park the rest of the, um, items, the, the rest of the content that was in that policy into a student trustee governance procedure. And so you have, um, in front of you or a link for the two drafts. If you have a look at the student trustee policy, um, we identify, of course, the objective. Um, and that's our commitment to involving students by providing opportunities for student voice and ensuring that student perspectives are considered in the decisions made by the Board of Trustees through the annual appointment of two student trustees. We provide some definitions around student trustees, student senate. And in the policy statement, we addressed the number of student trustees, which was directly out of the, um, uh, Education Act, the qualifications, um, for, um, you know, a, um, student who will be entering such a role and the terms of office. And then there's a number of references. And this document, this policy document will be, um, included in the student trustee orientation at the start of their term. The rest of the content, we moved into the student, uh, trustee governance procedure. And so this, uh, procedure is pursuant to the policy we just mentioned. Um, it does get into some of the definitions and then into specific directives. So it talks about, um, the qualifications for a student trustee, talks about the roles and responsibilities and talks about the meetings of the board. So what are some of the expectations and some of the kind of logistics and functional pieces, um, for student trustee engagement during a board meeting? It does get into, um, the piece around student trustee, uh, student trustee mentors, the terms of office and vacancies, as well as honoraria, reimbursement of expenses, resources and training. The other part, um, that was contained in the actual student trustee policy pertains to student trustee elections, which the group felt, um, should be its own, uh, procedures. So student trustee elections procedures document. And I guess the question that arose, um, when I had a, of kind of a final, um, catch up conversation with associate director Bog is whether those procedures should be, um, an administrative procedure or whether they, um, belong, um, under the student trustee procedures or as an appendix to those procedures. So we're kind of left now with that question. There was some mention, uh, by student trustees around, you know, would any other, um, administrative procedures be required? And really apart from the student trustee elections, which are supported by staff, but, um, which are really directed by student trustees, as in the student trustees really have a lot of say into, you know, how their elections are run, what's, um, what are some of the procedural pieces, um, dates, et cetera. It's, it's staff that would be supporting them, but the student trustees have, um, it's their thing, right? It's, it's what they get to decide, um, and change if they wish. Although hopefully, you know, this can be a fairly, um, uh, kind of a solid document that doesn't change or procedures in fact, that don't change, uh, year to year, because that would add a lot of confusion. Um, and, and they do as, uh, procedures need to be parked with something so that student trustees, their mentors and staff can easily find them and access them. So that's, that's one piece that's kind of outstanding. And I will let my, uh, co-chair Leah and any of the members of the committee, please, uh, fill in if I've missed anything.
Um, no Joanna, thank you. That was a really great overview. Um, and, um, you know, thank you to all the members of the committee who are, uh, you know, helping out here. I guess we wanted to come back to committee the whole because we have a tight deadline. As you know, a tight deadline in the sense that we want to wrap this up so that the trustees or the students have the policy and all the procedures, uh, because election time for student trustees is in February. So we want to, we wanted to ensure that we were meeting those, um, those timelines. And then also we were respecting the student senate needs to have eyes on these, uh, policies, uh, and procedures. So I guess today we just wanted to, um, update everybody, but we also really wanted to hear from you, um, how you felt about, um, whether, uh, the, uh, elections component, which is very staff and student, uh, driven, uh, falls under its own AP or whether we can capture it under governance. And I'd be looking at people here who, who would, I would really hope that we could get some, um, intel from you as to the pros and cons going forward. And I even invite staff, um, because I really think we need to nail this down, um, so that we can move forward. So again, the question is, uh, the student elections, um, uh, process, um, do we create or recommend that it becomes a, um, you know, a mid procedure? Or is it amended to our governance procedure and why? Um, so is there, we, we wanted to bring this to, to hear your perspective so that we could consider it in our conversations. I see Amy, thank you Amy for putting your hand out. I was so hoping you had a point to make here.
So, um, the, the point of governance procedures is to say how you're going to govern. Um, this is an election, so it's not about governance. It's, uh, about how to get the governing people into place. So I would say that it could be, um, its own procedure uh, that would reside under the, um, policy. Cause you're going to have, you have a policy and a procedure already. So this would be a secondary poll, uh, procedure that would reside under that same policy. And it would be administrative because there are pieces in it that speak to staff and their role. So that's how I would characterize it. It is kind of an interesting situation, but I would actually make that an administrative procedure.
Thank you so much for, um, that. Uh, and I see that there's, um, thank you, we really appreciate that because that was our initial goal to, but we felt it was important that we have this conversation. Um, I see David Bog and Andrea have raised their hands. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't know who, who rose their hand first.
You go ahead Andrea, I think you were first.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just agreeing with, with Amy because it, the election itself is very stra- staff driven. Trustees don't touch it with a 10 foot pole, um, and rightly so. Uh, uh, trustees don't touch it, uh, and student trustees don't touch it because they could be running. So it really, to me, falls completely under the staff realm and should sit in the AP area.
Can I jump in Leah? Um, I just, yeah, I, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. It is very operational in that the staff run and support the election. Um, but there are, there are some philosophical underpinnings, I guess, if you will, in this procedure around how the election, you know, how, how it is to proceed, the weighting of votes and those kinds of things. And, um, I think some, some trustees, I, I think it was about, I think it was the last board, I think it was about four or five years ago. There was a lot of conversation at the board table about how, um, that, that, how, how the election should unfold in terms of waiting and, and, you know, who gets to vote and those kinds of things. So, um, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's an administrative procedure and, and trustees are okay to leave that with staff, I think that, that's totally fine. I just, I, I, I think we got to be aware that it's, it's both operational and there's some philosophical pieces as well, um, that the trustees would, I think, have an interest in.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any other comments around the table? Speak, go ahead Amy.
Um, yeah, yeah, speaking to David's point, um, I understand the, the, the philosophical underpinnings argument. And, um, I think we've bandied this issue about the boardroom table so many times that perhaps it's because we are in a position of governance ourselves that we feel, um, so strongly about our positions on this. And it might actually be better in the hands of staff who, um, are not elected to their roles in the board and, and might have a little bit more of a, um, global view.
Okay, thank you. We certainly will take this back to our subcommittee who are all here, including our student trustees. Um, just wondering if our student trustees have any, uh, they were, they were kind enough to actually, um, give a, uh, you know, a preliminary, preliminary snapshot of the policy and the governance procedure, not the election, um, uh, AP, as we're talking about it. But I'm wondering if they have any, um, any, uh, thoughts, uh, or anything generated from their conversations from last night's, uh, senate meeting.
Sure, uh, hi everyone, I can go ahead and Casey, please feel free to jump in, um, because I'll definitely miss something. Um, but I, yeah, we did show this to, um, our senators last night. Um, they didn't really get a chance to look at it super thoroughly, so we are posting it so that they can take a closer look at it. Um, so far, I mean, the question we posed when we showed the policy was whether they see any potential barriers to running for the role of student trustee within the policy. So for example, something that says that you have to be, obviously we don't have this in our policy, but something like, um, needing to be from a certain region or, you know, a certain like group in order to run for the, for the position. Um, so we didn't see any barriers just right off the bat. Um, in terms of the elections AP, I also don't have a strong opinion on whether it's an AP or whether it's, um, amended to the governance policy. Um, but I do think it's important that there's student consultation on the elections procedure because we have had a lot of feedback over the years, especially last year, um, from the last election on, um, you know, elections rules, things like, uh, promotion, uh, fundraising and promoting the, uh, student trustee campaigns. Um, like what kind of rules there are for social media campaigning. Um, so I do think it's, it's important that we take into consideration the elections recommendations from last year as well as just the recommendations we've had over the years. In terms of the, uh, specifics on the voting, so like the weight that we put on specific, uh, votes, I don't think Casey and I had the intention of reviewing that again this year. Um, but we do want to talk to the senate about it because we do have a committee that we're starting specifically to look at policy, um, including the student senate terms of reference, um, as well as other policies like the student trustee policy. And we do hope to review, um, an elections AP if it does come out of the, the staff. So I hope that kind of answers the questions. Um, Casey, please do feel free to add on.
Good, I think you covered it perfectly.
Uh, okay, thank you, uh, thank you for that snapshot. Um, I know Joanna wants to speak, but, um, may I just interrupt? I've just been informed that the people haven't been able to access the latest, um, draft version. And, and I apologize, we'll get that amended, uh, for you so that you can have a look at it. And, um, so what was, what was being shown to you is sort of the latest version of how far we've gotten with the policy um, and the governance procedure. So there's nothing more than that, but thank you to Diane for share, shouting out and saying she can't access it. And she's on the committee, so I really appreciate that. Um, but, um, we'll, we'll make sure that happens. Joanna, did you have something else?
Yes, so just to clarify, I'm hearing there's general support for making the student trustee elections procedures, um, an administrative procedure. Um, but obviously our student trustees do want to take it to the senate and the, the student body to, um, get some input, uh, before that becomes all finalized and becomes an AP. And back to your comment Amy, um, would that then require us, uh, a separate, unique policy related to student trustee elections or is the AP a standalone then?
They, they can both, no, they're never standalone. There's always an associated policy to every procedure, whether it's administrative or governance. The thing is, it doesn't have to be a one-to-one ratio. So you already have a policy. You just cross-reference this AP under that policy.
Perfect, that's great. Okay, that helps. Thank you Amy. And there is one other question, um, let me just, okay. So from the original policy, there were a couple of things taken out that one pertain to, um, the Board of Trustee meeting agendas and materials. So the board shall ensure that student trustees receive and have the opportunity to review, to review all the, um, doc, the agenda package, et cetera. And second point was around, um, some of the resources and opportunities for training, so professional development, uh, use of outside media and system-wide communications and expenditures related to student trustees. So I know we covered the expenses, um, in the procedures, I believe. But do you feel that the pieces around access and, um, opportunity to re- review board agenda packages and anything else around opportunities for training or use of, uh, board, um, resources? Does that need to be, is there a need for a, a unique, uh, student trustee AP? Or would that fall into the student trustee policy or procedures that we are looking at tonight? Amy?
So anything that's in the ADACT doesn't need to be repeated. If it says in the ADACT that student trustees will have access to board agendas, then you just need to reference the ADACT and, and the section of the ADACT. That way, um, if the ADACT changes, you don't have to change the policy.
Sorry, thank you. That helps Amy.
Um, okay, so thank you very much for your comments and I, I, we apologize that you haven't been able to have a look at it. Just to give you a heads up though, um, essentially, um, we are using the policy as it stands and we divided it out. So there hasn't been, uh, a lot of amendments except for those items that Joanna brought forward, um, for you. But, um, you will have it and we'll, we'll be back with you, um, further on this one. So thanks very much, everybody.
Okay, thank you. And so I went in and I updated some of the sharing, uh, things. I think I missed somebody on the policy though. But, uh, so I will endeavor to take a second look at the sharing features. And if people are bringing forward committee reports, just make sure to, uh, share them with the group as a lot in this digital world. Um, but awesome work bringing all that forward. Okay, so if we go back to the agenda, we'll go back up to item 3.3, which was, uh, striking committee slash elections open space. And you'll remember that at the last meeting, we had a discussion about this and the will of the group was to just have some space if we needed to ask any questions about either the just have some space if we needed to ask any questions about either the striking committee opportunities uh, or the annual organizational meeting, chair, vice chair, anything like that. So uh, in, uh, since they're coming up in a few short weeks. So I believe what I put into the file here, um, let's see here, I put in the striking committee information from last year, so you would have that uh, information. There's the bylaws, uh, there's the report, there's the policy and the procedure are all in there. Um, just so you have it at your fingertips. So Andrea, you were the, also uh, leading this discussion. Was there anything else that missed or how you want to frame this?
No, I, I, I think you've caught it all. Um, I don't know if people want to uh, kind of go through the different committees and um, kind of those that have been on the committee can give a, you know, idea of uh, commitment, because I think that was part of the discussion, that people wanted to understand a little more about the commitment uh, before perhaps jumping in. Uh, and it would also give an opportunity if people feel that they, you know, wanted to to, to try something new or step away, or uh, really wanted, felt that they were right in the middle of meaty stuff and perhaps didn't want to step away for that reason, uh, that they can, they may want to, to say something. They don't have to, of course, but um, just in case. So um, perhaps, uh, do you want me to share this, the spreadsheet perhaps? Um, that shows the uh, who is on the different committees? Do you think that might be a good way of doing this? Yes, no?
I see some people nodded their heads, and then I don't know if we need to step through each and every one of them, but maybe just ones that are, people have questions with.
Okay, so I'll, I'll present this.
And I would also think that, you know, if people have questions about chair and vice chair, like be free to ask them as well, whether it be about time commitment or, you know, other things that happen behind the scenes.
Hmm, so uh, as everybody will recall, this is our spreadsheet that gets uh, populated initially through a form, and then we go through uh, to determine who ends up on the various committees. Uh, this has evolved over time and um, so uh, perhaps we'll just, uh, can everybody see that? Okay, I know I have to slide it. Uh, we have a number of, it's a very long, very wide spreadsheet. But uh, I see Jean's got her hand up, so why don't you go right ahead, Jean?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, first of all, your comment about this evolving ha- is in fact so true, and and I think we're getting to a really good spot here. I just had a question. How soon, I can't remember the timing of this. In other words, did this come out so that we could see what everybody was interested in before the night that we decided what people did? I, I just can't remember that, how that went down. Thank you.
Oh, you're on, I should be on muted and I'm not, and you are on mute. We're opposite.
Yep. Uh, the timing is always interesting in that uh, it straddles the uh, chair and vice chair election uh, time. Um, because it's good to have, sorry, my dog is, okay. It's good to have uh, the information to go quickly into that striking committee, because it's the, it's the committee of the whole meeting traditionally right after the annual inaugural meeting that the chair and vice chair are um, elected, and the chair and vice chair are the people that run the striking committee. So what we've done in the past is uh, sort of in the last uh, week or two before uh, before the annual meeting, uh, we've circulated the form and given people time to uh, look at the committees, uh, their descriptions uh, and express interest. And then after, uh, just after the um, the inaugural meeting, then that information is uh, compiled and used in that next meeting by the chair and vice chair at the time. So I don't know if there is a, something that wants, we could, we could adjust about that schedule. Uh, absolutely, I'm interested in feedback. Um, I'm always looking to improve. So um, Jean, if you do have anything further, that would be great to, to share.
No, I, I, I like the, the notion that uh, circulating this, allowing people to think about it, and then sharing where people put their interested blocks up. Um, it gives us a chance to dialogue prior to the night in which we decide everything, or at least clarify questions uh, that people have. So I, I like the transparency of it all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Tanya, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was actually jotting all the questions and points I wanted to make about this. Um, so the current version that's available is for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one year. When can we expect to receive the updated twenty-one, twenty-two description of the uh, striking committee list?
Well, I, I, that comes from staff, so that would be uh, Director NS and Manager Gortmaker. I believe uh, would be organizing that. Uh, Director NS, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, so we, we've had a chance to review the list, and we're just taking it back to um, AC on Monday, just to finalize it. Uh, so we've had a chance to review, and we'll, we'll get that out to you, um, you know, by the end of next week, for sure.
Awesome.
Can, can I ask another question?
Yeah, you're the only person on the list.
Awesome. Okay, so I'm assuming then that we're going to be adding the um, the Human Rights and Equity Committee that was created last year to this, to the striking committee. I guess this is more of a question for Director NS. And um, I know in the past, we have never had um, a description for the OPSA Director. And I was wondering if perhaps we could add that. I know that's not so much a staff responsibility. Um, but if we're gonna review a document and try to determine our interests, it would be great to have all of the committees or the positions in one document.
Could I just respond to that?
Sure.
We now have a terms of reference for the OPSA Director, so all of that information sits as an appendix to the um, committee's governance procedure. If that's helpful.
So that could be linked right in the form then?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be great. Thank you. Can I ask another question?
Go right ahead.
Awesome. Um, I know that yesterday was a, a very good example of uh, people were spread out very thin, only because it seemed that every committee met on a Tuesday. So Audit met, EMT met, Student Senate met. And I was wondering, has any thought been given to perhaps not having all of the meetings on a Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month, or I'm not sure what happened this month. But um, I know a few of us were would have liked to attend more meetings but couldn't, only because everything seemed to have fallen on the same day. Um, so something to consider. And then my last question so far is uh, I am currently one of two trustees on the Environmental Management Team. And the committee met yesterday, and Suzanne Burwell, who leads the EMT Committee, um, has put forth, uh, I guess a request or a wish that everyone who signs up to be uh, member of the committee would commit to a two-year term. I asked her if I could relay the information to the Committee of the Whole this evening to share her request, um, and to generate some ideas. Is uh, everyone willing to perhaps commit to two years for the EMT? And she is looking that perhaps that commitment would start in January of twenty twenty-three because our term does end next year. Uh, so it would be a two-year commitment for trustees going forward as of the next striking committee. So something to discuss if um, we want to talk about it, if we're okay with it. And then I did tell Suzanne that I would uh, get back to her with our feedback.
Okay, uh, Amy, did you want to respond to this, or?
Yeah, um, specifically to the uh, term length, we do have legislative committees, Audit and SEAC, where the members of those committees serve for the entire four-year term of the trustee. So this is not something that's new. It's just not been done before for a, a, a board committee. Um, an HDSB staff-run committee. But I see no problem with it. It would just end up being part of the write-up about the committee is that it serves for two years, and I certainly can understand Suzanne's interest in having the continuity there.
Okay, and Margot?
Uh, my question is different, so if there's anybody else who wanted to speak, because I know Leah, I see Leah's got her hand up, so if they want to speak to the EMT, go ahead. I just have another, it's a little bit of a technical question, I guess.
Okay, Leah, Leah, is your question around this?
For sure, thank you. Um, yeah, I was one of the trustees who was on EMT Audit and Student Senate, so I was, I was chock-a-block. Um, and I missed EMT, so I'm, I'm, I'm hoping, Tanya, you, you could be kind enough to like, what is the rationale for the two-year piece? Um, and, because I, I didn't get the nuance of that. And um, what is the uniqueness of EMT that sort of um, has that need? If you could elaborate, please.
Yeah, sure. So in speaking with Suzanne, it, um, there are many members on this committee, ranging from parents to principals, to leads, to facilities, to trustees. There's just so many different audiences. And it is a, a lot of work for her to every year come up with new members, to recruit new members. So to save her time and energy, um, uh, so hopefully, we can ask people to commit for two years, so there's that. And it also speaks to the continuity of having someone on there for, for two years. So that, that's where Suzanne's coming from. And that she did take a poll uh, yesterday with all the members. Um, so I think of the fifteen members who attended the meeting yesterday, fourteen did agree that they would be open to a two-year uh, commitment. I refrained from voting because I know we have our striking committee rules, so I did refrain from voting. But fourteen of the fifteen members did agree that it would be wise for a two-year commitment, so.
Uh, follow-up, please? So we have uh, the student uh, members, uh, there's an elementary student rep and a secondary student rep. Um, there would be no uh, guarantee that they could um, serve two years, because that is, um, what's incumbent upon them is they are student senators, so they may not be a student senator. And which means they are, become ineligible to be on the EMT if they're not a senator. So how did you consider, or how did the team consider the student members?
So Leah, what, that did come up, and that would be treated as an exception, because obviously there are other requirements. And um, also trustees would be treated as an exception because of our striking committee, unless of course, we agree tonight that we would be okay with a two-year term. So um, as far as uh, students or anyone else on that committee, uh, the two exceptionalities were students and trustees. Um, and if we can reduce the exceptionalities down to one, just as trustees, uh, sorry, just to the students, uh, that would be great.
Okay, uh, and sorry, uh, Margot, you had, you had your hand up before. You're okay?
Well, yeah, no, I, no, my hand is up, but if I'm just, it's got nothing, well, it's kind of, no, really not. So I just saw Kelly put her hand up, so if she's asking about this, just shuffle me until.
Okay, Kelly, go right ahead.
Thanks. Um, my, we've had this come up before in the past. Um, it's not something that's new, where some committees have two-year positions, and because of our striking committee, we haven't. And in the past, we've always been that exceptionality, um, because um, in the discussions in the past, if there's been felt that um, sometimes uh, different trustees want different opportunities on different committees uh, to be able to um, uh, get involved in different ways, and if that opportunity lessens by having two-year terms other than what is legislated by um, the ADACT, that we felt it was a better thing to leave it the way it was in the past. So um, just, um, I know that is what we have, that has happened in the past. It doesn't mean it can't happen now, but I'm just saying, this has been something that we have discussed before.
Go ahead, Amy. You're on the same topic.
Yeah, I'm puzzling this out in my head, because this is a staff-run committee, so this is operational. And while we do have our striking committees, I think we have to stick to the rules of the committee that's being run by the staff member, don't we? It's not our committee, it's a staff person's committee, so I think in, in order to keep governance and operations separate, we need to respect the rules that have been put forth by the staff member. I think.
Okay, uh, so we've heard a couple of sides on this particular. Okay, Ellie, go right ahead.
My only other thought about this is maybe um, this should be something that is left with the Director and Admin Council, and they should make that decision. Because um, they're the ones who ta- tend to make the decision about whether um, how many trustees and all that represent, um, are represented on different staff committees. So maybe they're the ones who should be making the decision about the length of the term that the trustees would be representing on this committee.
Okay, so I think we've got sort of a consensus in a way, like nobody's saying absolutely not. And uh, the other part that comes with it right now is the fact that for striking committee coming up, the two trustees that are currently on it, if they wanted to continue, they could potentially, if, if another trust, other trustees, um, like if they're not a real conflict there. But uh, we certainly, um, we certainly could uh, I ask staff about this, uh, Tanya and then Curtis.
Yeah, so to your point, Andrea, um, I did tell uh, Suzanne that we're about to have our striking committee meeting in December, so it, it's quite possible that there would be two new trustees on the committee. And uh, she did say that she understands how we operate, and um, she's, she's okay with having two different trustees for this year, or for the upcoming year. So that's why she indicated that um, the rules, um, maybe rules is too strict of a term, um, that she would like the two trustees starting a two-year term at the striking committee of twenty twenty-two, at the striking committee of twenty twenty-two, which would take effect in January of twenty twenty-three. So we're okay for this year.
Okay, for this year, I mean, in an election year, I mean, we could, we could all be wiped out in the next election. So uh,
And that's.
Then go forward with whatever they like. That would be, and nobody would know the difference mostly. Um, so Curtis, go right ahead.
Oh, no, thanks, Andrea. Uh, no, we're happy to take all of these um, points in consideration when we discuss on Monday. Uh, you know, the committee is confirming what they are, uh, trustees, uh, number of trustees, um, on, on committee term, length of term, those, those um, uh, variables. We'll definitely discuss them on Monday and confirm that with you next week.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, now I'm gonna, Gina, is this on this or is this, should I be, okay, it's on this. Go ahead.
Just really quickly to Curtis, um, I'm wondering if there are any other committees that have formed uh, in the last year that should have trustee representation on it? And would that be a point of discussion at your next AC meeting?
Uh, thank you for that, Jean. We will include that as well.
Okay, now Margot.
Okay, so my query, I guess. So I'm looking at the list that we have up here. And I don't think it's the right one. Like, I don't think this is this year's list. And I, just because I know there are things that I'm on that aren't here. So I'm just wondering, and that's just for me, just if I wanted to speak to somebody about some of the different things. Like, this still says, um, like DPR is Tracy and Andrea, but that's actually Andrea and me. And same with student discipline is Margot, Amy, Kelly. And I don't, I don't think I'm on, I don't know. So I'm just wondering.
Go take another look, uh, on this.
I put the last year's uh, report in there, the way it all turned out. So.
Right, so when you look at the bottom, it talks about who was, who was, I guess, voted. I don't know.
Just give me a second here and, oh goodness.
I like school year calendar. I thought that was Donna and Heather.
I can share my screen there.
Tanya.
I'll just show you the.
Go ahead.
Oh my gosh.
So, so Tracy, are you going to one of these other documents, like the PDF?
Yeah, if you go to, just a second, sorry, I can't do them all, all the things at once. Two oh one four four complete, that PDF, that's the report. And in there is, on page two is Appendix A, which lists kind of who was on, who was on what last year. That report's dated December tenth, twenty twenty. So, but don't get too hung up on, you know, because that might be the spreadsheet from the year before. It's just about process.
Okay.
And you know, some of the committees may not have met during pandemic times. So um, like Tanya and I are on one that has not really met. And so I almost forgot I was even on that one. Um, so I wonder if, you know, some of these will continue coming forward or, or not? Because there may have been changes operationally. Margot, do you still have your question, or was it mostly about?
No, it was, I was just trying to, I was, again, just, it was just for interest, really, but this is two oh oh, I can't find what you're looking at. Okay, don't worry, I'll figure it out.
Okay, I'll, I'll email it. Or it should, it's right in that folder. There's, if you go to the striking committee slash election open space folder, there are two subfolders and then there's a report underneath. So you might be just down a level.
So I'm in one of the, so I, I know Jean was on the same document as I was because I saw her there. But I'm a silly old computer. I'm trying to get back to the two, okay. Okay, striking committee elections. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Uh, and Andrea, can I just say, and, and Curtis, uh, a point here, you know, as we look through different codes and APs and all this kind of stuff, sometimes things pop up that you go, hmm, I forgot that was in there. Um, but we also have something in the Code of Conduct that should maybe make the list. And it's under section ten, it's that each year, alternative trustees shall be chosen by the board to be used when the circumstances warrant alternates to the chair and vice chair. So it seems like striking committee might be a logical time to choose those two people as well. So we might want to put that on the list for every year. So we get ourselves into that practice. Because right now, we don't have alternates as I, if I know that correctly.
Okay, so I don't know if anybody has, uh, I mean, we've made space here for, of course, talking about the committees. Uh, if anybody wants to mention, you know, any intention about a position that they're in or um, want to be in, or have any questions about a committee, this would be a time to uh, bring them forward. Of course, there's also, if you want to uh, just reach out to the person uh, that may be on the committee that you're curious about, you don't have to do it in this public forum either. So Curtis, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Andrea. Just for clarity, uh, Tracy, what's the alternates for, please clarify?
Uh, so it's in the uh, trustee code of conduct, it's section ten point three. And it's just, you know, if there's a code of conduct, something happening that involves the chair or vice chair such as a breach, then they can't be also the ones that are doing the investigation. So alternatives need to be appointed according to our, our own policy.
And that would be done by staff?
Uh, it would be trustees shall be chosen by the board. So we would do it during striking committee, we could do it during striking committee, just like the board chooses the OPSA reps kind of thing.
So this is more like an FYI.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure I wasn't missing something. Okay.
Just that if, if the group agrees that striking committee is a logical time to also kind of put that one on there. So we don't lose.
Yeah, and I, I guess it's, it's also letting, yeah, letting you know, Curtis, just as I said, an election year, a whole, all, all this history could wipe out in one night. And uh, and then that knowledge uh, that usually sits with the trustees about having an alternate, having alternates uh, would disappear with everybody.
For my sake and the sake of the board, I hope not.
It would be interesting, Amy. Okay, so we are just about right on time. Is there anything else on that one?
Just if anybody wants to declare anything, um, there, this is a space again to do so. You don't have to declare anything uh, now. And that's, uh, okay, Tanya, go right ahead.
Um, this just got me thinking because you're talking about wiping out the whole, uh, possibly wiping out the whole board next year. So typically, we have this meeting in November, as we are having now. So that we um, express our interest in December and we present publicly in January. Next year, our term ends earlier than usual. So are we going to bump things back forward? I can't remember what the right term is. I always get it wrong. Are we going to have this discussion in at the end of October after elections? On the press interest in November, um, because we, we're losing a half a month next year, which would impact the timing of what it is we're doing right now.
Yeah, I think that, that you're right, that there will be a compression uh, next year. Um, and after that, that will, that'll be fine until, again, the next election year. And uh, yeah, it can be, it'll, it'll feel like a whirlwind for anybody who's new at the table. That's for certain. But uh, yeah, we just gonna have to live within the parameters that we have and have been given by the ministry.
We might want to make ourselves a breadcrumb, ourselves or whoever selves a breadcrumb in the uh, report uh, this year that just says, note that next year's timelines will be amended in alignment with, you know, whatever timelines are playing out.
Yeah, ministry guidelines or whatever. I'm not sure if our striking committee has to fall the way it does, just the chair and vice chair, if we're, we have to move their inaugural meeting. That, we've traditionally done those elections at the inaugural meeting. And I think that's when they're supposed to be, though you often see in other boards that they seem to happen at other times. And I don't quite understand why. Go ahead, Tanya.
Um, so I can, I can venture to guess why striking committees happen at different times, only because feedback I've heard is that um, a lot of committees like to start a school year with the right people. Not with the right people, but with the membership for the year. And somehow with trustees, there will be one trustee representing, uh, representative on the committee from September to December. And then come January, possibly a new trustee. So there's a lot of turnover. So I know that some of the committees I have been on and am on have asked, you know, can you start the, your, the membership on the turn, on this committee as of September to reflect the school year? So maybe, maybe we look at our committees and maybe we do need to reassess when we have this striking committee conversation for these different positions.
I mean, the other part that goes with that is, uh, does, do staff know what committees are running? Like, a new committee will, when does it start? And a-again, things are, become wonky in those election years because you can't help but have people sort of joining committees mid-year. In that case, and I guess that's how it's grown out of that cycle, um, I don't know, either you end up extending or compressing one of those cycles to adjust for a September start. So um, perhaps it's something that we could discuss. I don't know if we can't, I, I don't, I can't see us being able to implement anything um, immediately, but uh, because we're already past September. Um, but maybe that's a discussion going forward. I'm not sure how to wrestle that one right at the moment.
We, I think we wrestled this last year and kept the status quo, right? I remember us having this discussion last year, the year before.
It was, that was definitely centered around the student trustee mentor. We had that discussion. But I don't know if we really, yeah, I think we, we kind of did touch on it to say, yeah, all committees because it became a big mess. Otherwise, uh, because, you know, centered around those uh, election years and, and stuff. But something, you know, we can always evolve, um, if, if things, uh, new information comes.
Okay, are we good to move on after Kelly?
Thank you. Um, you said you wanted to express interest in some of the committees and things. Um, I don't know, um, how, um, minute, I'm having a brain fade. I'm sorry, the, the drugs I'm on make my brain a little cloudy right now. Um, so the Human Rights and Equity Committee has just barely gotten started. We've only had a couple committees, meetings. And the actual work of the committee hasn't even begun yet. And I know I would like to be able to stay on that as it's, feel like I haven't even done anything. And um, I believe Heather may feel the same way. I don't know if she's on this meeting. But the, as a committee, um, we've been to a couple of meetings, but actually, nothing really has happened yet. So I know that I would like to be able to stay on it if it's possible.
Well, thank you for putting that out there. Really appreciate that, Kelly. And Margot?
Yeah, so kind of building off what Kelly is saying, I kind of wonder if we look at some of those, I'll say they were almost dormant committees for the last year that really haven't had any opportunities for the trustees to be involved. And if they are in that type of position, and as such, Kelly, who you know, has been put on this committee, um, and really hasn't been able to sort of, I was like, get her teeth into it. Um, that we almost have a pass on those roles. I just think it's uh, I, I, I just think that's fair. So I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on that, but for those positions that people came into possession of and really didn't get to do anything with them, I think they should have a chance to do so.
Uh, Curtis?
Uh, thanks so much, Margot. Certainly, as we can appreciate, the last, uh, you know, year and a half has been quite disruptive and things are, have not been normal. Uh, however, at first pass at the committees, I believe there was only one, and I can't recall which one at this point, uh, that uh, we did not feel was, was relevant. And so I, I believe moving forward, almost all the ones that we have looked at will be back uh, for trustee representation and for active uh, participation. So hopefully, uh, we'll confirm that for you next week, but point well taken.
Right, so I'm not saying that we're getting rid of the committee. I'm just saying, like, so for example, with the equity committee, which uh, Kelly and Heather were appointed to quite late last year.
That's the Human Rights Committee.
Human Rights Committee. So that they, because they didn't really have an opportunity, just with everything going on, that I would, I don't know, suggest that they have a, a, a two-year term. So not that, I, I'm not saying to get rid of things, but.
Yeah, to, to, Tanya, go right ahead.
If anyone wants to say something about the Human Rights Committee, go ahead, because I have a different item.
So far, you're the only person on, with their hand up.
Okay, so, um, during the course of this year, we created the Governance Standing Committee, which will have to be, uh, have trustee representation. So I just want to make sure that that will be um, added to this spreadsheet and perhaps to the report that Curtis and team will be uh, working on for Monday.
Yep, I've added it to the notes that I'm making here. Uh, Amy, go right ahead.
Can I also ask you to add the Trustees Professional Development Standing Committee? Thank you.
All good. Anybody else have anything? And just, uh, okay, that's okay. Um, okay, uh, any other further declarations? Anybody want to say, hey, I want to run for something or anything? Because we're, we're making the space. The time is done, but if anybody wants to. Uh, Margot, go right ahead.
I'm gonna be bold. Um, I am considering running for either chair or vice chair. I don't know which, but one of them. So I'm really just weighing out my, my options. But as I know, this was something we were going to talk about today. I am being bold and making that first step in declaring my intent.
You're still on mute.
Thank you very much for uh putting yourself out there. And uh, anyone else, so if anything, you do not have to say anything now. Jean, go right ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to declare that I look forward to this whole process. And I think uh it's a time when uh all of us come together. We, we begin to analyze our, our strengths and, and, and our aspirations. And uh I look forward to that. It's a, it's a very positive discussion. And I like where we've landed over the years. I think we've all worked very well together to see to it that everyone gets uh something that they would really, really want to do. And I think um in the spirit of uh sharing different uh experiences, I think we've, we've done a great job. So I, I just wanted to declare that because Curtis doesn't know uh how well this group uh works together when it comes to this very, very important decision. So that's my declaration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Very well said. Okay, so I guess uh Tracy, I believe this topic is done.
Okay, uh, super. That sounds good. And so then we'll move on, jump down to three point four. And we have a number of subcommittee reports for 10 minutes or less. So we'll just dive in. The first one is Governance slash Bylaw Committee. And there was one item that needed to come back, that was the Chair slash Vice Chair nomination. So Margot, you made a nice segue there, uh, and then other things. And I believe that uh there's some, go ahead, Amy.
I was just going on the list because there's uh an item in the folder.
Yes, go ahead. You're up.
Me? I'm on? Oh, okay. I thought you were gonna go to Tanya. So um, we talked about what might happen if nobody ran for chair. If, if that would ever happen in our board. And so um, we did some thinking about it at uh the Governance Committee level and um put together a couple of uh additional um sections to the bylaw. And basically um added in an element that if nobody went, uh, wanted to run for chair after the first go around the table, um, then people would be then asked again. But in the second go around the table, they could encourage someone else to run if they wanted to. And not as a nomination, as an encouragement. Um, and uh that would maybe help people feel a little bit more confident about putting their name forward. And then if that didn't happen, um, still nobody wanted to be chair, we would take a brief recess, allow people to do some thinking, come back to the table and give it another whirl. And I'm hoping that it wouldn't take three times around the table to find somebody. But um, we've been really lucky to have good boards where we've had people who aren't afraid to take that role. And um, quite often, there have been competitions for the role. And it's done in a good-hearted way, but that's not always the case in some boards. And we can't take it for granted that that's always going to be the case at our board. And so hopefully, um, if you've had a chance to take a look at it, you'll see it's pretty straightforward. It uses pretty simple language and it shouldn't be difficult to follow if that should ever happen.
Are there any questions or concerns? I'm imagining the next steps, uh, if it's agreeable here, would be to bring it forward to the board. Uh, go ahead, Leah. And Tanya, feel free to jump into this role, the facilitating role for this 10 minutes. Go ahead, Leah.
Thanks. I just uh was hoping to get some clarity as to um why uh perhaps the recommendation is not to um include a nomination. Um, I, I liked your language of uh encouraging uh an individual, but what was the sort of um uh reticence to actually just going all out there and saying, you know what, I'd really like to nominate this person to, to run?
Be, because if somebody was hesitant to put their name forward at the meeting, uh, the nomination can, can be a bit aggressive. They haven't put their name forward and yet somebody's nominating them for the role. And um that can make people feel pressure. Whereas encouragement is a friendlier option and allows people to say, I really appreciate your faith in me, but not this year.
Fair enough. I, I think there's, that's really a nice way to put it. So thank you for that explanation.
Okay, it doesn't look like there are any other comments on that. Uh, uh, Amy, can you say what your next steps are?
Coming to a board meeting near you.
Okay, so are you thinking this coming board meeting?
Um, it could probably be done. Um, I, I, I would have to write the report tonight, or maybe Tanya, could you write the report? You're the chair, you're the chair of the committee.
I, I, I can do that. You did all the hard work. I, I will do it. Gail, it's coming your way.
Thanks, Tanya.
Okay, uh, was there anything else for that subcommittee, committee, standing committee?
Um, I could, I could um, actually, I, what, there is another update, but I'll let Margot provide the update because she is the chair of a subcommittee from the Governance Standing Committee, which is just to provide an update on the operational policy, procedure, DPR, policy, DPR, procedure. Maybe she wants to share where we're at uh up until now.
I can. So I was actually looking at it today. So we've had four meetings or three meetings, um, looking at uh the policies and procedures around director's performance as well as role of the director. I'm right now in the midst of, I had given everybody a deadline for final edits for today. And so I'm just right now going through those to see, to make sure that it all makes sense. But I think what we have been able to do, oh, Amy?
I have been so busy, I haven't done my edits. Can I have one more day?
Yeah.
Just one?
Yeah.
Tanya's writing the report for me, so I'll have time. Thank you.
So really, what we were just looking at was um seeing if um we can combine the policy, the two policies into one as an umbrella policy, and then have two procedures that fall underneath that single policy. So uh again, as I said, I'm just going through the last bits and pieces, dotting i's and crossing the t's, and hopefully they will be all organized by December, or sorry, December, to bring back to the board.
Okay, thank you. So um, Tanya, Amy and Margot, you have earned the group a break for five minutes because you were efficient and got through this in five out of 10 minutes. So I would invite everybody to rejoin at eight fifteen, eight twenty, sorry. Which is Governance Review. And so I will just uh lead that one off. Uh, today, Heather, Jean, Margot and I met to uh review the previous Governance Review processes that were undertaken in 2018 and 2019, where we uh carried out surveys. Uh, the questions were drawn from OESC and OPSP and Good Governance uh sources. And we developed some goals. And last year, due to the pandemic, we carried those goals forward. So we also reviewed those. Uh, in the uh report, in your, in the folder, there's links to both of those things, the previous Governance Review and the goals. We also reviewed the outcomes of the recent trustee survey around this governance process. Uh, you have a link to the outcomes also uh in the folder. Uh, just a high-level summary. There was an interest in continuing with these processes so we could look at and reflect how we're doing uh together as a group, as a team uh on our, our governance-related activities. There was some interest in exploring some of the new or additional approaches that have been um identified uh through some of the governance modules that are out there. And those include uh interviews, observations, focus groups. And there were varying levels of agreement. Some said yes, and there were a number of people that said, you know, maybe, we need more information. So we took that as an interest in exploring them. Uh, and then lastly, there was uh interest and support in developing a policy and procedure to guide uh these reviews in the future. So here's where we are at. We have a motion to propose, I, if it's agreeable, that would be another uh report going forward. The motion is that the Governance Review Subcommittee be reconstituted. And by what we mean by reconstituted is that we would uh welcome new members and people who have been on it since the beginning to step away so that we kind of have a, a bit of a fresh uh slate here. And that that subcommittee be reconstituted to develop a Governance Review Policy and Procedure. Um, and that in lieu of the Governance Survey this year, the Subcommittee planned a one-hour session for Committee of the Whole to review progress on the 2020 goals and engage in a discussion about successes and challenges over the past year in order to revise or confirm those goals. Uh, and that such a session take place by the end of January 2021. So uh, we looked at, in some, we looked at the processes and goals and your survey input. Uh, and we're proposing to continue the work of a Governance Subcommittee. And that work, rather than doing another survey at this point in time, uh, that we would undertake two tasks. One, an open discussion about how we've, how we've been doing. And two, um, that a policy and procedure would be developed. So other committee members, if there's anything to uh add, feel free. And if not, any questions. Go ahead, Jean.
Thank you very much. Um, just wondered, i- is that a motion that you've read now? You need a second or two?
Uh, we would just need somebody to move it in.
I would, I would so move. My second question of um this group is um, would you also be looking to uh collect names tonight of interested parties? Thank you.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. And uh, it's gonna be a bit of work. In the past, the work has kind of been as a, a clump around this uh time. Maybe 10 or 12 hours of work and a few meetings, I guess. But this is, we're proposing some different work for this year. And as one of the persons pointed out in their survey, that it is really governance, consideration of how we're doing is an ongoing thing. Um, the policies and procedures would be to guide that ongoing piece as well as kind of the accumulation where we're actually documenting stuff um and making ourselves goals, so. So anyway, Tanya, go ahead.
Okay, so a couple of things. So I'm hearing you say you're looking for membership. And I'm hearing you say that you've got a plan in place for the year. And I'm also hearing you say that governance is a year long process. It's not something that's just done once a year. So if the idea is to create a committee that has the ongoing task of ensuring that we're governing properly, should then we consider making this a committee as part of the striking process? So that it's a committee that does get formed every year? Because it is not lifelong, but it is a year long process, things that have to get done regularly. So I'm just wondering if that's been, if that was considered? And also it would help as trustees plan for the year when they're signing up for all of the different committees. It would help just perhaps visualize what it is that they're signing up for the year ahead.
What does everybody think? So in 2018, this is something we started from scratch. In 2019 or 2020, our process was affirmed through OPSB and using this sort of as a best practice example, which is great. So yeah, I mean, your question is how do we want to strike this as, you know, we just talked about the bylaw committee and the PD committee. Do we want to do it as such or continue as we are? Go ahead, Margot.
Yeah, so I just have a kind of a question along those lines. So when I'm looking at the striking committee, committees that we get on to, it seems that those are the ones that are led by staff. Because there's only one or two on each of them, apart from CAC, CAC and Audit. I don't know where I was going with this. But I, I wonder with this, if we're doing a governance committee, as you said, that's a year long process, do we want it to be? I don't know, I'm kind of lost in my thoughts right now. A stat, is it a static, I'm not sure. I'm just, I'm just thinking along the lines that when we do striking committee, I always seem to think CAC is done for the once, for the four years. But every other committee, it seems that we are just, there's only one or two. So it's not like a bigger committee. Those ones we seem to always do here. So I don't know, that's just a thought. I don't know, I'm a little bit perplexed.
We'll think on it, and we have a couple more speakers, Andrea and Amy, go ahead.
We used to have quite a few standing committees, and then we wiped that out for Committee of the Whole. And now we, as we've sort of found areas that do require more of a continuous focus, we seem to have formed some standing committees again. I don't see why we, originally our standing committees were consisted of all trustees. And so it's, it seemed like we were doing a committee of the whole, but we were just bantering topics back and forth from standing committee to standing committee. That was all of us, so it was just kind of stupid. But now the, the standing committees that are forming aren't everybody. And so I think the work is more focused. And they're like, it's, it's, I think there is more of a use in them. Though I, I wonder, like I'm, as I said, I was sort of adding things to the list. And governance standing committee, Amy mentioned adding. And I'm like, we should probably determine how many people would be on it.
We have a terms of reference, it's, it's no more than five trustees on the standing committee.
Yeah, and that should probably be across any standing committee. Because otherwise, if you have quorum, like you're basically almost having a board meeting, right? So
So
Yeah, I thought it was just information, sorry, no question.
If, yeah, if we change this to standing committee rather than Subcommittee, we'd need to add terms of reference. So it would be policy, procedure and terms of reference, probably. Go ahead, Amy.
So I'm of the mind that if the work is something that is not short term, if it's no longer an ad hoc committee, that it should be a standing committee. And that is how the Governance Committee, Standing Committee came to be. And that's how the Trustees Professional Development Standing Committee came to be, because it's an ongoing need of the Board. And, and it's part of our role as trustees to ensure that we're looking at, at the governance documentation, the policies and procedures of the Board in a timely manner, according to a schedule, as well as making sure that we are keeping our professional development up to date. I would think that the work that you've been doing under reviewing our governance is also something that's not an ad hoc committee. This is work that's been ongoing on an annual basis through the year since you became Vice Chair, I think. So I, I look at this as something that's worthy of being a standing committee and having a terms of reference. My only ask would be that we somehow differentiate the Governance Standing Committee from the Governance Review Standing Committee? Because I know that it gets people really confused. The, the purpose of, of the Governance Standing Committee is, is looking, reviewing the documentation. Whereas the purpose of your review committee is to look at, at how things unfold at the Board table, which is a little bit different. And so I, I think at some point in time, we need to differentiate them in their title so that people don't think that they're the same thing.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the ontariasschooltrustees.org. They're, it's the OESC learning modules, and they call it Board Self-Assessment: Colon Governance Performance. So there's some alternative words if you want, if you like them.
I like self-assessment. It's self-explanatory, and nobody's going to question what it means.
I was just going to say the exact same thing, Amy. I think that sounds, I think it sounds nice.
Okay, either hands up, sorry, there aren't. So Jean, can I just ask about some friendly amendments, since you moved this? To say that the Board, a Board Self-Assessment Standing Committee be struck to develop governance, a policy procedure in terms of reference?
Yes, that's fine with me, thank you.
Margot, go ahead.
Okay, again, thanks, Tracy. So I'm just wondering, so I know it was no more than five. I'm, I'm just, what do we, so does it, I know that's what the bylaws say. So is that what it has to be, or can we give a number to it?
If, if I may, this, this motion cannot be passed at Committee of the Whole. It has to come to Board, because we're asking to create a standing committee. So I just want to make sure that by passing this motion this evening, we don't assume that this means that the Standing Committee now exists. And if, if we, to your point, Margot, about do we need, can we make it less than five? We could make it less than five, but usually the people that are interested gravitate. And five is a good number, because it's odd. It's not too small, and it's not quorum. So, and, and that way, that committee can meet with as few as three and, and still conduct the business at hand, but not get bogged down by having to meet in Committee of the Whole, because they're too big. I, I, I think just limiting it to five is fine. Some years, there won't be five.
Okay, are there any other comments? And I would imagine that would be part of the role to develop that terms of reference as well. Okay, so I have gone back and also changed out Subcommittee for Standing Committee and Governance Survey. I included Self-Assessment Survey. Jean, is that okay? I just, okay, so seeing no other discussion, all those in favor. And as Amy pointed out, that it's in favor of passing a report through to ourselves in, in a couple of days. That's one option. Of course, the other option is to defer, because we don't have enough information, all those in favor. Okay, and that carries? There's a couple, people may have stepped away for a moment. So that, that carries unanimously now. That's great, thanks, everyone. So we'll move on to DPR, Director of Governance Review.
So is this the one I spoke about earlier?
You have a tendency on this topic.
Yeah, so I don't, I, I'm thinking we actually covered it when Tanya passed it over to me earlier.
Okay.
Unless Andrea, was there anything else that we wanted to speak to as far as the process is concerned?
As far as the DPR process, as it's, as we're going through it right now, we are meeting with Curtis on Friday. And we will be having a DPR session prior to private session next Wednesday. So at 5:30 as a group, okay? Those that are on the committee, I know not, I know two trustees weren't, decide not to be on the committee, of course, they are welcome to attend the meeting.
So and then as far as all the policies and procedures, I updated before. So I think we're good to go.
Yep.
There's 10 more minutes for you, Tanya, and Tracy, sorry. You're muted, Tracy.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move forward then to the next topic, which is Reimagine Forward. And just update everybody on what's taken place in the last month since we met. Out, as an outcome of our last committee, the whole brief discussion on this topic, a meeting was held between David, Curtis, Scott, Andrea, myself, and then a subsequent meeting with the Subcommittee. And there were a few points of agreement that emerged from the discussion with staff. And including that the Declaration creates an opportunity to have a big picture conversation, a broad conversation, and some positive impact there. That there are some existing HDSP tools which could shine a light on this as well as doing their current functions. Examples were director's cut, spotlight on schools, possibly some of the work of the shift, where there are intersections. There was a reflection on repositories, that this is something that has been done centrally, provincially, to not, and, and that it hasn't achieved necessarily the the hopes or the aspirations. So that other, other opportunities we discussed. And one of them was to, if we consider back to the multi-year plan and the success of our online engagement, that we could utilize a platform such as Thought Exchange, another platform that's out there, and that we could set that up to spark conversation broadly around a single question, which could be something like, what are the big moves and ideas to reimagine public education? And there was feeling from senior staff that the resources would be available to make this happen. And then lastly, that we still need to write our, our letter that was part of the original motion to let the minister know that, hey, we asked you to do something, you didn't do it, so now we're doing something. And this is what we're planning to do. And then, so outcome from our meeting today, there's a few of them. One is to seek your concurrence, that we move ahead with staff on the next steps in timing regarding something like a Thought Exchange platform, and how we may do repurposing or harnessing those existing tools, working towards internal HDSP launch plans for early 2022. That Andrea would start drafting that letter to the minister. And depending on the timeline for finishing that, we may or may not also be at the same time, you know, letting other boards, what we're doing, know what we're doing, and invite them to join in. And then the other thing is, it was pointed out that, you know, it's great to do this online stuff, but we're really missing in-person things. So that maybe we could also start to consider whether we could have kind of like a reimagine day of action, where we're getting people together outside in the spring to do something. So I think at this point, we're just looking for your questions and concurrence that we are moving forward. Okay. And other committee members, feel free. This is another one of these where we're creating something from nothing. So it sometimes feels a bit painful, but sometimes feels a bit like really energizing, which is where we're hoping to go.
I think you've captured it well, Tracy.
Okay, I see some thumbs up, maybe some blazed eyes. You know, we're getting to that point, aren't we? So, okay, we will just move on then. We'll take that as our instruction and support to move forward. We'll go on to Professional Development Update. So over to that Subcommittee.
And so we had our meeting today, and we're moving forward with the planning for the Communications PD. And you will have noted that you got an invitation to a doodle that will help us plan around dates. We're hoping to have this PD before Christmas. And so if you could, please fill out the doodle, that would help us in the planning process. We're also starting to look at doing something of a team building exercise in January. Something that's a little bit more light and that we could do with staff. Invite staff to participate with us and get to know each other a little bit better and in a more informal way. And we're still working with Director Ennis on putting together some professional development for the senior team and for trustees regarding the difference between governance and operations, how we work separately and how we work together, and the director's role in the middle of that group. And the director's role in the middle of that group in working with both sides of the equation and getting some a facilitator to come in and provide that for us. So that, those are the things we're working on and you will be finding out more as we make some progress.
Hey, are there any questions, comments? Go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. Could you tell me a little bit more about what this communication PD is about? Because I didn't really understand it when I read the thing.
When we did the survey last summer, so a summer of twenty twenty about what trustees were looking for, there were a number of different aspects of communications that were interesting to trustees. One being those difficult conversations that we sometimes have to have with parents. Where, you know, whether it's just that we're not able to do as they ask or that we are, are perhaps in a position where it's not within our job description to be able to do what they would like us to do. Those kinds of conversations, but then also having a minority opinion while, while at the board table and being able to express that in a way that is comfortable for everyone around the table. And also communications with, with staff and with other trustees about the work that we're doing. So building good relationships with your principals and superintendents and all of those pieces of the puzzle. Does that help, Kelly?
Yes, thank you very much, Amy.
Okay, and for people who haven't yet done their doodle, just put in a plug. There's lots of options. There's a few that seem to work. So if you haven't yet taken a look, please do, just so we can, if, if those few that seem to work so far carry forward that we can get them locked into everybody's calendars. That would be great. So we'll go on to three point four point seven, role of the trustee.
Yeah, so this one is, you know, role of the trustee and promoting the trustee role. And onboarding new trustees is also part of this. So the committee met, Donna, Jean and Kelly and I met. And we, we worked through Jamboard to try to brainstorm ideas. Came up with lots of them, also assess that we do have some of the resources already available and can, you know, pull them together. There, there are some, I, I think we have a lot in our Jamboard. And we, our next meeting will probably be sort of a realistic look at what can be done in the time that we have. As this is an election year and we'd like to, and also a timeline about how to tackle some of these things. And how to get that out to the broader trustee group so that they can disseminate information forward on promoting the role. And, and then we can backfill later with the onboarding, the new trustee resources that are available or need to be adjusted or created. I don't, have I captured everything, Jean, Donna and Kelly?
Great job.
Yeah, I think so, Andrea, for sure. And I, I have a very strong interest in really leaving a legacy piece on the, the idea of the onboarding for trustees. So this is a very, very valuable work and I look forward to moving forward with the committee on this.
And I believe that's it for us.
Okay, thank you. Ah, yeah, if you ever need any guest, guest participants, I would love to as well. Okay, so on to three point five, other business for committee of the whole. Is there any? I don't see any, so we can go to trustee questions and comments for committee of the whole. Quiet. Okay. I would just like to make a comment and that today I read an article titled Ground Search of Former Mohawk Institute Residential School Begins in Brantford. So we've done some professional development learning around the Mohawk Institute. I believe it's the closest residential school to us here. And one of the longest standing ones in Canada. And they have now just begun their process of mapping things out. And they're going to be doing the ground penetrating radar process in, in the spring, I believe. So it will be very I, I would think very distressing for indigenous people, not only in that community and that First Nation, but all in an ongoing way. So I just wanted to let you know that process is now unfolding very near to us as well.
It's actually already started, Tracy. They're not waiting till spring. They've already started. They say it's going to take them five years though.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly. Um, and so there are no other questions and comments. So I'm just going to look at the, the spreadsheet and we don't. There have been no submissions for this evening. So I, I would like to take a motion to rise into private session then for a brief private session. Thanks, Andrea. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Donna, are you here?
I am here and my hand is up.
Okay, it is. Okay, excellent. Sorry, I didn't see that. So Kevin, if you could close off the, the public session, that would be great. Much appreciated.